Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Today's date is December 12, 2023. And we are gonna first hold the Barbequery Unified School District Governing Board Public Hearing and move on from there. Roll call, please. Present. Make sure you guys turn your mics on, please. We do have a quorum. Continuing with our agenda number three is our routine business approval of the December 12, 2023 public hearing agenda without objection. A motion to approve. Is there a second? Ms. Kathleen Vance, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number four is our information items. Letter A is public hearing on the proposed Barbequery Unified School District Expenditure Report Revision Number One. Mr. Diaz or Ms. Robago, please.
Thank you, President Buendia. Governing Board members, members of the community, parents, students. Today, we're gonna have a public hearing before we begin the regular board meeting. We ask for your support and your flexibility. Thank you so much to see so many students and staff members and parents. It brings a lot of joy. This is one of the requirements that we have by the law that we have to review the budget. You get to see where the money is coming from and the changes. Thank you for being here. Ms. Robago, please take it away.
I'll be fast, I promise. There's only a few changes. So attached is the Barbequery Unified School District Fiscal Year 24 Revised Budget Number One. The changes from the adopted budget are summarized below. This revision is required by Arizona Department of Education and must be board approved no later than December 15, 2023. The reason for this revision is to align the budget to the state-approved budget factors and more accurately reflect the district's budgets. Arizona school districts are funded on current year funding for the general fund. This means that the district must eliminate, or sorry, estimate its enrollment the summer prior in order to adopt the budget. The enrollment is then revised for the budget revision presented for approval at the end of the year based on the actual enrollment. For the December revision, the enrollment has decreased since adoption and the approval of the adopted budget. The decrease is demonstrated below. In Group A for our ADA count, we adopted 1,008 students and we had to revise after the actual numbers came out to 958 students, our ADM count. And for Group B, the exceptional ed counts, K-3 reading and free and reduced weighted Group B adopted budget, we had 1,718 for the count and it has been, it's going to be revised on this budget to 1,615 for the count.
What page should be pointing at?
It is, well, it should be the hearing notice era. So it's, yes, it's not this, sorry. So page one. Two, sorry. The ADM count at the top part, portion, section one. So increase in maintenance and operation fund, that's our MNO funding, 1,159,180. This increase is primarily due to the budget balance carryforward from fiscal year 23 offset by the decrease in enrollment. Overall year to, overall year-to-year budget increased by 15% from 9.9 million to, in fiscal year 23, to 14.4 million in '24. The budget balance carryforward on the revised budget is $1,632,015. Do I have any questions on the revision?
No questions? Was that it?
Yep, that's it.
Ms. Sylvia? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. With that, we'll move to adjourn the public hearing. Group by Ms. Sylvia Hendricks. I'll second the motion. All those for? Mosapo against? Motion carries. Public hearing is adjourned at 5:37 PM. Okay, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your patience. We'll call to order the Tuesday, December 12, 2023 Barbequery Unified School District Governing Board Meeting. Roll call.
Sylvia Hendricks. Kathy Vance. President Buendia.
Yeah, and Hitech.
Ella Griswood absent and my number Stevens absent.
Okay, we do have a quorum to continue this evening's agenda. Letter C is our Pledge of Allegiance. If you are able to, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Letter D is our routine business. Number one is the approval of December 12, 2023 board meeting agenda. Board members, are there any changes or is there a motion to approve? Ms. Hendricks.
Yeah, I wanted to, for the convening into executive session. And this is in regards to the superintendent's.
Can you get your mic a little bit closer?
And this is in regards to superintendent's contract. I'd like to, not postpone it, but table that until January's meeting.
So we'll remove letter H from the agenda this evening and place it on January's agenda. Is that your motion?
So that, does that eliminate H, one and two, right?
Well, it'll be H and I. Wait, sorry. Letter H, I.
H, one and.
And J.
Oh, I and J, okay. So those three are tabled, right?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
So go ahead and make the motion to approve the agenda with the changes that have just been made.
Motion to approve the agenda with the deletion of letter H, I and J to be placed on next meeting's agenda in January. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Kathleen Vance. All those in favor? Mosapo. Okay. Motion carries. We'll continue with our agenda this evening. Number two is the approval of the November 14, 2023 regular board meeting minutes. Board, with your approval, will also approve November 29, 2023 special board meeting minutes. Without objection, a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sylvia Hendricks. All those four? Mosapo. Motion carries. Letter four is our call to the audience. Sorry, number four.
President Buendia, members of the board, members of the community, we do have the privilege of having to call to the audience and we can have the first person come forward, which is Francisco Franco, no, Francis Benavides. Please come to the podium. I'll take that back. Are there any cards from call to the audience? This is the time to be presented. No call to the audience.
For the record, we have no call to the audience. We'll continue with our agenda this evening. Letter E is the information items. Number one is the Barbequery Unified School District Students of the Month. Mr. Diaz.
President Buendia, members of the board, this is the time in which we get to celebrate all of our students. Thank you, parents. Thank you, staff. Thank you, members of the community. Please join us in celebrating our standing students of the month. If this is your first time, you're gonna go forward, you're gonna shake everyone's hands, then you're gonna come and get your award and come back for a picture and let us know what they want us to do for you. If you want us to show up hard for the picture, the number one, put your picture up for the picture, we can, we can do pretty much anything but a car wheel. So at this point, thank you.
Good evening, President Buendia, governing board members, superintendent and community. Our first student is a pre-K student and I saw him out there from Ms. Vega's class, Matthew Lopez and family. Can you please come up? Matthew is from the House of Isabindi. He is very helpful in the classroom. He helps other students, especially making puzzles. He is always happy. He plays with everyone. It is a pleasure having Matthew in the classroom. When he grows up, he would like to be a police officer so he can help people. Our next student is from Ms. Salsito's kinder class, Bren Chico. Bren is from the House of Amistad. He comes to school every day with a happy and positive attitude. He is so eager and joyful to learn and he shares that with his classmates. He works really hard and he reminds us regularly to celebrate our accomplishments. Bren is usually the first one to encourage his classmates and he says things like, "We are doing a great job. We are working hard and way to go, everybody." He is so kind and happy. They are glad to have such a wonderful, encouraging teammate in their classroom. Thank you, Bren, you are doing an amazing job. When he grows up, he wants to be a clown. Our next student is from Ms. Hernandez's first grade class, Dario Ortega. Is Dario here? Okay. Our second grade student is from Mrs. Granado's class, Ms. Aurora Monte. Aurora is from the House of River. Aurora has shown excellent ability to set goals and shows persistence in achieving them. She is accountable and responsible. She makes smart decisions and listens to opportunities to improve. Aurora relates well to her classmates and is appreciative of different perspectives and experiences. She shows a positive attitude with classmates in group projects and activities and both takes and gives the suggestions and directions effectively. She is indeed a pleasure to have in the class. Aurora wants to be a teacher when she grows up because she wants to help teach children in the community, especially in reading and math. Our third grade student is Najoni Olgin. Najoni, are you here? And our last student was nominated by Ms. Kay from our culture, one of our culture classes, James Burnett Cooper. James is from the House of Isabindi. He is very attentive in class. He is picking up the language very fast. When they are reviewing the lesson, he always has his hand up and can answer in the Othom or English depending on the question. He is not scared to try to pronounce the words. James said, "When he grows up, he wants to be a movie actor because he wants to make movies." And now from intermediate campus, Ms. Begay Lewis.
Mr. Flores. Good evening, parents. Mr. Flores will present his fourth grade student.
Skuukhurini, Ani Alapchukik, Mr. Flores, fourth grade teacher of Oggyworkahar, Habash Chamaqud. As with pride, I represent to you the fourth grade student of the month of November. Friends, join me in welcoming student of the month, Lila Pablo Buendia. Lila has shown significant effort and improvement in her academic and behavioral performance. Her positive attitude greatly impacts the classroom environment. She takes on leadership roles in the classroom and she approaches challenges optimistically, encourages peers and maintains a positive demeanor. She consistently displays kindness, empathy and respect towards her peers, teachers and other staff members. When she was asked, "How can she make the world a better place?", she said, "I can make the world a better place by helping to take care of the environment in my own little way. I will pick up litter when I see it because it may cause damage to the earth. I will spread awareness by encouraging my classmates to do the same." Congratulations, Lila.
Thank you. Is Chrissy Anton here? No. Chrissy was our fifth grade student of the month. And our sixth grade student was from Mr. Marcos. I don't believe I see Mr. Marcos. No. Okay. Mr. Marcos chose Alexis McGill. I know I saw her. So Alexis helps the class tremendously. She helps clean the classroom. She participates and has respect for the teacher and her classmates. She is working with her classmates and finishing her work on time. She amazes the teacher so much. She submitted her work with the highest expectations and even works on Saturday on her homework. And she wanted to create a better place by trying to strive to make a positive impact on the community by not only cleaning the trash off the floor, but also by actively helping people in need and donating items to those less fortunate. And our next student, I want to read about him before I call him up because this is a special nomination for this student. So if his parents are listening, I chose this student for his fearless acts of speaking up to let a staff member know that there was a fire on our campus in the bathroom. Many students wouldn't speak up to tell an adult, so we are very proud of him to give our security, Alan Leonard and custodian, Chris Marietta, time to act fast to make sure that all students were safe and that everybody got out and they were able to put out the fire because this one student spoke up because many students won't speak up. So thank you to his parents for raising a respectful son and always being willing to help others. This is not, this isn't just a one-time act. This is him every day of being respectful. So thank you, parents. Keenum Francisco.
Good evening, governing board, Mr. Diaz and community. I am here to present the students of the month for the secondary campus. Sorry. Starting with seventh grade, we'd like to invite Skuya Velasco to come on up. The seventh grade team names Skuya Velasco as the November student of the month. Skuya is the daughter of Shaylen Salaya and Eric Chavez. Her home village is Sells and her home district is Hickewan District. Skuya is a proud member of the House of Dreamers. Skuya is an athlete playing both volleyball and basketball. Her favorite class is math with Ms. Bash. Skuya's favorite teacher is Ms. Clovia Martin because Ms. Martin is nice and cool and gives you more time to do your work. After graduating from Barbequery Secondary, Skuya plans on going to TOCC then transferring to a four-year university. Her current career goal is to become a firefighter. There are two people that Skuya greatly admires and would like to thank. She would like to thank her parents for pushing her and being hilarious. Eighth grade would like to ask Haisha Juan to come on up. There she is. The eighth grade team names Haisha Juan as student of the month for November. Haisha is the granddaughter of Elizabeth Jose. Her home village is Nolik and her home district is Barbequery District. Haisha is a proud member of the House of Dreamers. She serves the, she serves the eighth grade as the vice president. Her favorite class is math and her favorite teacher is Mick Swaganka because they are funny and nice and helped her with a lot of math. After graduating from Barbequery Secondary, Haisha plans on going to either GCU or UofA Bear Down. Her current career goal is to represent the Thana Otham Nation to the world. One person that Haisha greatly admires is her sister Kaylee Juan because Kaylee is strong, nice, and Kaylee is always there to support Haisha. Keep up the good work, Haisha, and keep pushing to learn and grow as a student. We can't wait to see all you accomplish. Ninth grade would like to ask, is it Seema? Saima? Saima Nalam. Saima Nalam is the freshman class student of the month for November. Saima is the daughter of Jaina Jane and Sammy Nalam. Her hometown is the Philippines. She was selected to be a member of Amistad, the House of Friendship. She loves to play badminton. Her favorite class is auto shop because her dad teaches it. Also, her favorite teacher is Mr. Nalam because he is her dad. After graduating from Barbequery Secondary, Saima plans on attending college, most likely in the Philippines. Her current goal is to become a chef. If Saima has a secret superpower, it would be teleportation because she would like to be able to travel the world and be home for dinner. Congratulations. We are so glad you are here and we are so proud of you. Tenth grade would like to ask Daniesha Miguel to come on up. Daniesha Miguel is the 10th grade student of the month for November. Daniesha is the daughter of Flora Gomez and Maurice Miguel. Her home village is Sells and her home district is San Javier District. She is a member of the House of Dreamers. Daniesha is an athlete playing volleyball, basketball, track and field, and softball for the Lady Warriors. She serves on the executive board of the student council. Her favorite class is team sports with Mr. Meese, who is also her favorite teacher. After graduating from Barbequery Secondary, she plans on attending TOCC for two years and then transferring to GCU. Her current career goals are to become a flight attendant because she wants to help people and to travel. The people she admires most are her sister Alexis and her best friend. Congratulations, Daniesha. We are proud of you. 11th grade would like to ask Sajana Nalam to come up. Did I say that right? Sajana? Sajana Nalam is the junior class student of the month for November. She is the daughter of Jaina Jane and Sammy Nalam. Her hometown is in the Philippines. She is the House of Dreamers. Like her sister, Sajana loves to play badminton. Her favorite class is art with Ms. Roach because she loves drawing. Her favorite teacher, of course, is Mr. Nalam because he is her dad. After graduating from Barbequery Secondary, she plans on returning to the Philippines and attending college. She plans on studying nursing. If Sajana had a secret superpower, it would be invisibility. Congratulations, Sajana. We can see how wonderful you are and we are so proud of you. And finally, for 12th grade, we have Jaden Wan. Jaden Wan is a 12th grade student of the month for November. Jaden's guardian is Elizabeth Jose and she lives in Nolik and her home district is Barbequery. She is a proud member of the House of Friendship. She is active in athletics and is one of Barbequery High School cheerleaders is probably where she is. Jaden loves to read and she likes all her classes and teachers equally. After graduating from Barbequery, she plans on attending Prescott College where she plans on studying design. Her current career goal is to become an interior decorator in a large city. One person she greatly admires is Destiny Robles because she is very encouraging and is a good example. Congratulations, Jaden. We are also proud of you. And now, Mr. Fox.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, Superintendent Diaz. Good evening, the remainder of you that are left. We go last, which we like our position, but our crowd gets a little smaller. So let's make sure we clap a little extra for this month's student of the month. We had a tie over at Indian Oasis Middle and High School between two senior students who have displayed just absolute academic prowess, time management skills. Their attendance is well over 90% for the both of them. So first... So first, I would like to call up ladies first, Ms. Marion Johnson. This young lady has the ability to spread herself so thin. There's some of the reasons she's spreading herself so thin. She's a fantastic mother and a great, great role model for little Genesis who's right up there. And then, we have a young man who, every community day, it's such a, it's so much more fun when Mark Blaine, come on up, Mark, when Mark Blaine shows up with his little brother on his shoulders, getting pulled around by kids that are about up to his waist. He again juggles quite a bit in his life. He's come over quite a few obstacles and he still proves to be a family man for his younger siblings. So we are very, very proud of Mark. Thank you guys very much.
Again, we just want to make sure to share with the community and all of our faculty, staff, administrators, that it does take so much for us to be, I mean, for our students, I know, especially to be able to be successful. So we always want to take a moment during our monthly meetings to celebrate. Thank you for being here to help us celebrate and continue to do well. Those of you who received awards and those of you who have not yet, you are absolutely still capable. So thank you so much for joining us. We'll take a short break and then we'll come back to our meeting. You are more than welcome to stay, but we know you have dinner to get to. So thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four senior class trip presentation. Mr. Diaz.
One of our student, senior representatives, we have two students representative. I want to thank the members of the community and our parents. And I want to also point out the, with the purpose of having our senior class go back and continue to check on the progress on the trip. As part of the governing board and, and the superintendent's office is that we want to continue to ensure that our students are on, on track and that they have everything that they need and to ensure that they have all of the details ready, given that we want them to enjoy their trip. Also, we want to use the influence of the governing board meeting as one of the additional venues that all of the parents will get the information to ensure that we all have the same information and at no point parents can say that they did not get any information. And number three is also a part of doing our due diligence that now that they have the big items, that they also have the, the small items, possible unexpected items, so that they were, they have everything that they need to enjoy their trip. And having said that, please let's give him a hand to our two leaders that are going to be here to represent. And also, let's give our, our, send our, our best thoughts to our, our teams. I know they're going to be, they're on a big game tonight. And we, Devin was supposed to present, but he's also one of our players. So let's send him all of our love and all of our strength. And now take it away. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jordan Jose. I am the senior vice president. And today we'll be talking about our travel plan for our senior class trip.
Let's.
Thank you. So far, we've raised five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars since the senior year has started. The total amount in the account is three thirty-two thousand six hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents before we purchased our luau, which will be eight thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars, leaving twenty twenty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. We're planning on asking Desert Diamond Casino Legislative Office, Executive and et cetera for, for additional help. Thank you. We're also planning on continuing our school sales. We estimated about seven thousand to ten thousand dollars still to come. The following is the travel receipt, I believe. Yes, it is the travel receipt for our airfare. Oh, it's her flight information. Sorry. Our updated quotes. Our airfare will cost twenty-two thousand dollars. There will be a one thousand five hundred dollar deposit to hold the seats. In March, we are going to make a final count. Either we add or reduce the seating. Housing is paid for confirmed thirty-five people who will be able to add more rooms if needed. There is no required fee for this donated timeshare. Info about housing on December fourth. On December fourth, we received this note regarding the registration fee for booking the rooms. Stating that there will be no money needed for the. This is the info about the housing. Hi, I'm Gem Roque, and the secretary for twenty twenty-four senior class. This is all the info about the bedrooms, the. Uh, re- information about the bedrooms that we're going to be in. We plan on announcing tutoring and at class and parent meetings in order to notify students of resources to help us stay on track to be, to graduate. We can also suggest alternative to students to get caught up. We have thirty-one students that have fifteen or more credits and fifteen that have fifteen or below. Thank you.
Let's give him my hand. Once again, I want to, President Mondia, if you allow me. I want to commend our senior class for the hard work and all of the work that they're getting, not only as a community, as, 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 as a parent and the staff that are supporting this endeavor. It, it, it shows all the commitment based on everything that you have fundraised and you continue to fundraise. We want to promote and continue to promote that we have tutoring after school for students that want to meet the eligibility. We also going to have winter credit recovery for any of the students that are falling, falling behind. We want as many students that want to make this happen to make sure that, that take advantage of all of the opportunities that we have to reach the goal. One of the areas that I also look forward to continue to hear from my seniors I know that once you pay the luau and once you pay the, the twenty-two thousand dollars for the airfare, I wa- I don't want you to be surprised, but I want you to keep in mind somewhere in the back of your mind, how are you guys are going to budget the ground transportation needed? What do I mean by that? The transportation from here to Phoenix and from Phoenix back? Since you guys are going to be leaving from, if we can put it all in, in, in our future presentation. Because some of, we can, you can share that. I'm going to ask the questions, but please bear with me. It's not all of the parents are here and I want to make sure that everyone gets the information. If you have the answers, great, but I want to make sure that all of the parents and the members of the community have the same information. And this is something that I will also look forward to hear for, since it's not in the presentation, so it leaves room for asking questions. And, and, and I want to make sure that we have the same opportunity to ask, because if something goes wrong, I want to prevent that ahead of time. Last year, based on the senior trip, we got involved at the, at the end of the year and it was a little bit too late. I don't want to repeat history and therefore we want to make sure that we cover all of our cross, our, our teeth and dot our eyes. If you have any extra information or share some information on ground transportation, the food, I, I, I need some clarity because when you book a timeshare, some resorts, they require a resort fee and sometimes they don't let you know until you're there. I want, just if somebody can call and ask for clarity, I know you, it, it's free. And I appreciate Ms. Casares, but I want to make sure, because those fees sometimes they can be up to a thousand dollars per unit reserved. I just don't want surprises for my, for my students or for my chaperones. Also, the plan for, the students are going to be leaving early in the morning and, and, and this already budgeted food for the airport or the, or when they're traveling. And also, the, how is ground transportation once they came to Honolulu? From the airport to the resort, from the resort to get groceries and also for the excursions. And I'm, again, I, I see that there's thirty-three thousand dollars, eight thousand for the luau, twenty-two thousand for airfare. And I, I, I'm excited to hear that you're going to be reaching out to all the agencies for support. But I want you to keep these on the back of your mind. If you have some of the answers, please come back and share that information, but I just don't want you to be surprised. These, you've been working so hard for this trip and I want you to make sure you enjoy it. But these are some of the questions that so far, you guys are my students, you guys are our students, and I want everyone to make sure that they're not surprised. Ms. Leila Choy, you were raising your hand. Do you have any additional information that you want to share? Okay. So it, as soon as you have more additional information, we welcome you to come back. That way we know that you are on track and also let us know what additional support is needed for tutoring so students they reach their goal. Members of the board, any other comments or questions?
Ms. Sylvia Hendricks.
Yeah, you look like you're doing a, you're doing a great job in your planning. I just had a couple of questions in regards to the luau. Is that for how many people are you, did you pay for? And then also the airfare for the twenty-two thousand, how many, is that for thirty students, thirty-two students?
It was for thirty and the airfare for thirty.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I was just kind of curious. I was trying to look for the, the numbers how much it was for, for each, I mean, for how many students for each of those events? Or the, the flights and the, the luau. But it looks like fun.
Any other comments or questions?
How many chaperones are going? I didn't see cost. Are you paying your own chaperone? Is it included in there?
Um, it was included actually in the travel form that was sent to the board early on to get approval.
I think the question was, are, are, are the chaperones included on, on the traveling and, and the reservations? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Van.
I think that, you know, what superintendent is really trying to express is we want to make sure that all the bases are covered, like for the food, to make sure that there's enough food for all the kids, to make sure that there, the ground transportation, the cost is something that's not overlooked and that you, you, you keep that in mind. You know, tho- those things that you might not have thought of, that's what we're trying to help in that area. So, you know, I know in the beginning I thought I had seen something about a plantation, the pineapple plantation was, or was that something else?
Yes, that's really.
That was in there too? And there was other things, the, the deep diving or the, no, scuba diving?
That was an option, yes.
Okay, so those things aren't happening?
The plant, the, the, the gold plantation and the zoo are happening. But I, we haven't decided on the water only because a lot of kids don't know how to swim. And so we're trying to do more land stuff.
Okay, but so those costs are also in this, the presentation? Or they're not part of the presentation yet? The figures or the cost? No? Okay, so. Okay, and then on the presentation, it had that you had October date to make a deposit? So that was that done on the air?
The deposit letter writing made, but that was the first quote that I had gotten from the airlines. I have to get permission in order to exceed to make that deposit. So then there was a different quote that was uploaded.
So this one is a different quote?
Yes, that was the first one.
Oh, so this isn't the real one?
No.
Okay. That's it for now, for me.
Okay. Look, there are no other questions. Thank you so much for the presentation and we look forward to any other additional information.
Thank you, everyone.
Number three is our barbecue unified school dish, Hakim Duck Award. Mr. Diaz.
President Mondia, for this item, we don't have a nomination for this month. The one that was submitted will be part, that was submitted late, will be presented during the January meeting.
Okay. For the record, we do not have an award for him Duck Award. Would have been good to know, so we could have taken it off the agenda.
I'm sorry?
Would have been good to know, we could have taken it off the agenda. Number four, Autumn Language Center, Autumn Language Center and Language Advocates Presentation. Mr. Diaz.
President Mondia, members of the community, please let's put our hands together to welcome Ms. Francis, Dwyane and Ms. Andrea too for the presentation. Whoever is going to come to the podium, feel free to join us. So you can drive. Let's put our hands together and welcome them. Thank you for being here.
That's good, Kudinik. It's good to be here with everybody. Thank you for letting us share our presentation with you tonight. We have myself, Frances Benavides, I'm with the Autumn Language Center. And then we have our language advocates that are here with us as well. And they're also going to be presenting tonight. So we have Ms. Andrea Ramon, who's an instructor at TOCC. She teaches the Autumn Language and she's also an immersion trainer with the Autumn Language Center. We have Dwayne Pierce, who's an instructor. He's a part of our language advocates group. Ron Geronimo, who's our director of the language center. And then Ms. Teresa Choywa, who is one of our language advocates. And the language advocates is a group comprised of different representatives from lang- language-focused programs across the nation. We have people that work within the community, within the nation, within the schools, entities of the nation, who are actively working toward language continuity. And one of our primary goals as a collective is to support that the language continues to move forward and be a strong and vital part of our community. And so one of our primary goals is to ensure language continuity, that we want to visit with the schools, the communities, the districts, to share about the status of the language and how the whole community has a role in ensuring that the language continues to move forward. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the current status of the language, our shared language goal, and then our shared language goal, how the schools are a part of this effort, and then some resources that are available. So we'll start off with Ron, who's going to talk a little bit about the status of the language.
The autumn language, along with all other language, indigenous languages in the United States are in danger. And, you know, there's a big. And, um, you know, there's a big, um. Emergency, I guess you could call it, in, in the language. And so when we looked at, uh, Bureau of Education report that talks about the national language. They, it was, uh, mentioned in there that a hundred, that in the United States, there are a hundred sixty-seven indigenous languages. That by twenty fifty, there will only be twenty indigenous languages remaining. So, uh, for Autumn, we want to be in that twenty, uh, if that's where it, where it goes. So, um, for the Autumn Language, it is an endangered language. And we're using the data from UNESCO, which is the United Nations Educational Science Cultural Organization. And it's the one that most people use when they, uh, talk about the status of the language. And they do say that the Aut- Autumn, Autumn Language is definitively endangered. Meaning that, um, even though there are still speakers of the language. That, uh, when you look at the age group, they're mostly the elders, uh. Um, they're seventy and above. And, um, children are the ones that are not learning the language. But yet, if a language is to continue and survive, it has to be learned by the children for them to carry it on. Um, and, and I, I say that, uh, language endangerment is, it, it creeps up when you, you know, you don't think about it, you don't see it. You don't really know it and then all of a sudden it's there. Uh, and, you know, for myself, just to, when I became aware of. Um, that the children were not learning the language, is when I started working for the school district back in ninety-four. And I was, um, working with, um, third grade class. And one of our duties as, um, aides to the classrooms. And, and in that time, all classrooms had an aide in their classroom. And we taught language and culture to the children, um. And that, that was when I first realized that, that the children, uh, third graders, that none of them spoke the language. Before then, I just thought everybody spoke the language. Because that's how I grew up and that's how, what I saw. So, um, from that time on, um, uh, working, um, as an advocate for the language. Uh, because I feel that language is a lot more than just communication. It involves a lot of different things. To be able to know your language, to be able to speak it and things like that. Uh, it brings a lot of empowerment, it brings a lot of self-esteem. And, and, you know, especially here in the Autumn Nation. And, and so that was, uh, you know, one of the goals of, um, creating this Language Center. Is that a lot of other, um, indigenous groups and, and even just here at Hill River and Salt River. They were doing a lot more with, um, and they had less speakers than we did. Autumn is in a, a good situation right now where we have a lot of resources. Meaning we still have a lot of speakers. And I, I used to say that, um. That, uh, I was, uh, a, a, a young elder, I guess you could say, um, saying that. Uh, there's still a lot of young elders speaking the language, a lot of resources. When I think about it now, I, I'm, I'm, that was back when I was like thirty years old. Now I'm sixty, now I'm an elder, you know? And those kids that I worked with in ninth, uh, third grade, they're now thirty years old. And yet they didn't speak the language in third grade. So, um, again, it's just showing that, um, that, that, that language endangerment is creeping up on us. Go ahead. So, uh, we looked at, uh, some data that was collected back in two thousand and four. With the, uh, educational, uh, comprehensive education study that was done. And, and that, um, it was a big thing that happened. Um, but part of it, uh, did talk about language. They, they collected data from, on a, a, a survey about language. And back then, they, they did, uh, in two thousand and four. Uh, in the sixty-plus age, age range, the, the, the speakers were in about the ninety percent. There were ninety percent that were speaking the language. And they did a forecast for twenty twenty-four, which is next year. Uh, and those sixty age group category, there's, uh, what, it's about eighty percent. Or a drop in about ten, ten percent and, and then in twenty forty-four will be fifty percent. So that was back in two thousand and four, uh, when we. Um, when the, uh, Language Center was established, one of the things that we did was to do a survey again. Um, and so the next survey was in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Um, the next slide up, yeah, now. Up.
Number six.
Next one? Yeah. So we did a survey with the Language Center and we collected, um. Uh, respondents, uh, almost a thousand respondents here in the nation. And when you look at the fifty age group range, around, about sixty around there. Yeah, with just a purple color. So the third column down from the right, uh, you can see that it's from top down, it's almost to the fifty percent range. So here in twenty twenty-three, uh, when they forecasted in twenty, two thousand and four. That in twenty fifty-five, we will be at, uh, fifty percent. But tw- in twenty twenty, we're at forty percent with that sixty age green, age range group. So it's, it's, um, nowhere. We're getting there a lot faster and that's happening, you know, all over. The, um, uh, languages are again going extinct rapidly. And so, um, the Language Center was created to try to, uh, do something different. Um, to, to be able to, um, somehow, uh, work on. Um, having that, they call inter, intergenerational transmission from adult to child of the language. Uh, so that when they grow up, they'll have that language. And, and I say that, um, that a child is going to learn English no matter what. That's how we grew up. We learned Autumn as our first language. But as we grow older, we learn English and now, you know, we're bilingual. And, and it doesn't hinder our, our academic success or, you know, our growth and things like that. That, that, um, being able to speak two languages, uh, helps you more than if you didn't, weren't, weren't able to speak two languages. Um, so that's kind of, um, a, a quick, uh, status on the language and where Autumn Language is right now.
Thank you.
Maach ba m'na ko'ak ch'um m'na ko'ak. Hupi ch'up ot kak'uk ma has mas'um bochi haichu. Tam d'et um, t'mbo'a ha'u o'mai w'umt. Tam d'et hum'uch'a sh'arab'ay chi um muu haichu um'a ga'otam ka'ch amd'et kam d'et hupi ch'ech ma't pi'ha'amich. T'k' amerikan ka'ch mo'a'ga pa pi'has'uch' d'uh ba m'na ko'ak ch'ug'ap' irdum ta bo'uch'uk' na ko'ak. K' um, t'uh w'uch'ar'ya haichu k'ma'ta'm sh'otash'uk' it w'us'ech. Ma ch'up' irdum ta w'us'uch' oi tu w'umt, w'us'uch' oi tu w'umt. Um, et ki'am d'et et kit'am mam t'otam ka'ch mo'a'ga haichu. Uh, apim mam'ta'ak'uk' t'ek' aar mam't p'umsa'otam ka'ch ho'uk'ach haichu. Ko'as'in, ho'uk'ani ku'pi sa'tam, ewam'ag'in. Ash'ch'mas'uch' ch'mas'ash'us haichu ho'uk'ach. Ha ba, ha ba ho'uk'ach d'et t'k'ho'uk'm aar mo'mo'mo'm w'umki. Um, p'umsa'nyukut, uh, uh, am'ma'mha'sh'dayu, p'om'at'm'a'arka'ma'mat. Uh, toka'kat tomoika' k'kos' ash'uch'uk' d'os' amich'ud at' d'eki. Uh, pa, uh, mammas'amich'ud tam'uk' huh'ur'inyok. Am'uch'uk m'na ko'ak ma'ta'mo'a'ga t'k'shach'uch' d'eki ma'ta'hum'uk'ho'ak. Ma shasmas'um bochi haichu otam ka'ch. K'ach'up' irdum ma'ta'moi, mo'y'uch'uk'ei ho'uk'm ba'uh mam'ch'ipkanam huh'ur'inyok'tam. Ma'ta'p'ay chi muu haichu mo'y'ushak, uh, muu haichu mo'a'ga t'k'otam ka'ch. Um, ch'uh, uh, p'ek'uh'ch'ipkanak. Mam'ta'k'uh'iyah'ak mam'up'up' i'ch'ipkan. Ch'mas'ek'uh mam'sh'ch'ama'ku't hum'uch'um'aj'myam'ch'ipkan'ami. Oh, sh'ch'mhupi'ami, um, t'uh t'uch'uk'tam. Mam'ta'hu'us'am haichu bo'ap'ap' po'ho'uk'ach'it otam'nyok. Ch'mas'ek'uh, oh, et ay ma'ta't g'gos, uh, et ay ma'to'ch'ipk, um. Et ay ma'to't piho', um, ash'us haichu ma'ta'mai'ushak. Ko'ho'uk'ach p'egi nyat'oh'ap'ut t'k'otam. Ma'te'g'oto kak'uk ch'ma'g'oto kak'uk to'ami ch'k'ko'ho'uk'ach d'et ba'uh. K'um, uh, uh, pa ma'ch'up' irdum ho'uk'm mo'pi'ma'ch'uk'otam'nyok. Pa'tach'uk ma'to'mai p'egi nyap'ta'moi ha'w'umt ko' saho'ik'et. K'um, ma'sis'ap'entak ma'ni ka'ita, um, sh'au ch'uk'ik.
Uh, dia, uh, Ruben dia?
Ruben, Diaz, ha'u, pi'nyap'nyit'akam ch'uk'ik. Ha'u, ha'u. Sis'ap'entak ma'tup'uch'uch' ch'mas'pit'otam, ch'mas'pit'nyok'ach. Pa ho'uk'ach, mas'ma'uch'ar'uch'uch' mo'has'ch'uk'ik. Ch'mas'ya'ash'ash'us pa'ak'aar. A'ar'oh'nyit'at, pi'ono'nyit'at, oh, nyah, ho'uk'i m'na ko'ak p'egi, uh, ch'uh ho'uk'i pit'otam. P'egi, p'ani'oh'na ko'ak ma'ta'ma'ta bon'uch'uk' n'ak'uk'oh'uk'ach. K'ks'ap'uk'ak,ks'ap'uh'nyit. K'um, itam'mam haich'uk ch'mas'ash'us haichu ho'uk'ach. Um, um, mam'to'ay uh'w'umt, um, k'mo'uk'ach d'ek'otam'nyok. Uh, ch'am'uch'uk'ao'ak'ak ma'sh'ch'ama'ku't, um, p'ums'uk'i ma'ch'up'ak. Ma'te'g'oto ch'ich'uch'ik'ar, oh, et ay ma'to'ch'ich'uch'uk'oi wah'ach'uch'k'uch. Oi, ch'ich'uch'in, ch'ich'uch'in, oh, k'ui'ah'uh'ay mam'tu'moi wahp'oh'tachiwan. Oh, ni'ka'hamat, oh, k'nyit'at, oh. Ch'mas'ash'us haichu, oi, g'at'od'ar'mat, shh, ei. Na'kos'kap. Ash'ash'us haichu mam'to', uh. Iha'w'umt t'ek'mo'mo'pi'ma'ch hasmas'um ho'uk'ach'it otam'nyok'ak ba p'ums. P'umsa'ash'us'omai ko'ash'us'oh'uk'ach ma'tas'ma'ma'tup'uch'uk'ita k'mhup'ar'uch'uch'otam'ka'ch. K'um, an'uk'ap'up' ird'uh mo', uh, mop'uch'uk'iyam ma'te'g'uch'uk'ita haichu. Ma'te'g'oto'hum'ap'up'hum'hum'uch'ak. Ma'ch'uh ba'uh s'ap'uk'ak k'uh Sylvia ma'tup'ch'i mo'mo'mo'm'a'ak ma'sh'uch'ya haich'uk. Ma'tam'si kak'uk'na pi'haich'uk t'k'Sylvia up'ch'i, uh, ya'ni haich'uk. Ch'mas'ho'uk'i haichu mam'ta'mhu'us'am oi, oi, uh, oh'uk'ach d'et. Tom'ap'ut k'itam ma'tp'up'uy'ay'tadak om'om'ka'ham k'uh, ah, x'uk'mas'ma'up'uch'uch'. Mo'ya haich'uk, s'ap'uk'ak mas'ma. K'um, um, uh, pa mam'up'up' uh, et ki'oidak mam has'uch'. Ma'te'g'otam haichu has'uch'ami, oh'uk'ach d'et ch'mas'ek'amerikanam'ok'ait'ak. K'um, pa ch'mas'ash'us'oh'uk'ach d'et, uh, ma'nyap'up'nywa'ani ma'te'g'oto haichu han'orat'ami. Uh, sh'au'ak'ash'au, no'p'ash'k'ya'ak'ash'au, ha'u ma'te'g'otam'oi. Uh, t'po'tar'uk'it and the bochi ani, ah, sh'ap'ay mas'ma. Ta'ma'sha'pi'ha'amich'up'ho'uk'm mas'amich'up' t'po'chi, ah, ma'nyas'ap'uh ap'ik. Sis'ap'entak ma'tup'uh'um'oi nodak'ak mas'ma. K'um, uh, ma'te'g'to', ma'te'g'oto han'ora taichu. T'po'chi, um, am'onyak'ak'uk'no'sha'cha'ih'uk'i and the bochi otam ka'ch bochi, oh, pi'ha'cha'ih'uk'i. Ei, uh, itan do'uk'ach'oh'k'riaro ma, you know, mas'ma'mha'mhu'us'uch'uch' k'mas'anyam'ach'uk. Na'pi'uh'mha'mha'sma'ch mo'it'et riar'haichu'am d'et. Oh, ma'te'g'otam'j'uk'um, hupi ha'uk'ho'ich, uh, nam'uk'ho'ich. Ch'mas'pi'om'ach'uk'as'uch'uch ho'ich and the bon'uch'uk'mas'ma ho'ich. Oh, bananas, how, oh, we don't have any, ah, how, p'egi, oi, sh'aha. Ha ba, ba ani, oh'tam ka'ch'mha'ak'et kam ha'tash'uk'it non'oy'ach. T'uh, ta'mo'uk'ach'uk'ami ch'ma'nyas'uch'ak na'pi'pi'op'ash'uch'uch pan'ik'haich'ho'ich. Pi'nyap'sha'ich'uch'uch pan'dam'ha'tash'uk' ma'nyas'uch'ak. K'um, oy'am'ash'uch'uch, oy'ash'ap'ut ho'uk'm mas'anyam'ach. Oh, at'up'ui'bar'el'ama'up'ch'um'ar'ak'ch'ch'is'ah'uk'ya'ii, bo'yu'm'uk'i mak'ak'otam'nyok. K'pa ham'oka no'pis'ma'ch'ani. An'uk'mas'ma'ird'no'pi'muu ch'ach'um'mo'ap'uk'k'Ron mo'ch'uh'k'uk'ur. Ei, ani'up'iko'ri'okst. Ha, ba ho'uk'mat'k'uk'ur ma'tp'ums', uh, pi'muu sis'ap'uk'ach'amerikan'nyok. Um, ma'totam ka'ch'moha'wi'nyok'ma haich'ak kak'uk'moha'nod'ek. Ch'mas'ash'us k'um, sh'abo'uch'mas'ma. K'um, ho'uk'mup'pos'ho'ik'wushak'uh mo', um, aham mam'mani'mi'ka'ham. Ma'hup'up' i'am d'et. K'um, mam'te'g'oto ho'uk'ach'ek'otam'nyok. Um, sis'aps'k'uk'ma'g'awar'emas'mo'nyit'at haichu. K'um, pi'ma'ta'mai'amerikan'am d'et'oh'nyit'at haichu. Uh, mop'te'g'otos'mat'k'et k'nyok. K'um, s'ap'uk'g'awar'emas'mo'ayko'nyi haichu, ayko'nyi haichu. Pi'ma'tp'p'ay sh'ch'uch'ar'uh'amerikan ka'ch'oh'nyit'at haichu. K'um, nyah'itam'me'no'ap'oh'ak'iyam ma'shaich'uch' growth mindset. W'us'uk'i haichu ap'up'uch'uk'in'ap'ayko', uh. W'us'oh'ui w'umt t'ek'i mop'te'g'oto mai ko'ho'uk'ach d'et. Ko' samich'ud at'uh otam'nyok'to' im'w'um t'ek'am d'et na'pi'g'awar'emas'mo'nyit'at haichu. Ayko'am d'et, ayko'am d'et pi'ma'ta'mai'ch'uch'um, sh'ar'inyim, um, hum'uk'ho'haichu pa'bo'nyit'at. K'um, uh, ma'te'k'oi w'umt, um, aham mam p'ums'uk'i ho'uk'mo. I, pa't'uh, pa't'pi'ha'amich'uk'ari. Na't'up'ik'amerikan ka'ch'k'ach'k'um, um, otam ka'ch'up'oh'uk'ush'at sh'rohan'odak's. Uh, et'ap'ix'ay'woh'uh'ho'uk'i. Pi'osh'ay'woh'uh'ho'uk'ach d'emo, ma'tp'ay chi'uch'uk'ei k'ach'uch'to' dak. Ma'uch'uk'ak k'ach'uch'to' dak. Uh, ma'ta'p'ay chi'sap'oh'mai haichu. Uh, ma'te'k'nyok'am d'et, oh, ma'te'g'oto nyit'at haichu, oh, ma'te'g'oto ho'uk'ach d'et haichu. K'um, ach'up' irdum mas'ma'ma'ta'mpe'mo'uk'uch'uk'tak d'eki ma'ta'. Um, ma'to'han'odak's pe'ak, pi'ch'up' ird'et'at'oi w'umt. Uh, ch'ay'up'uk'ach'ups'ii'ird'um to'ih'na ko'ak'as'imas'ma ko'ho'uk'ach d'ek'otam'nyok. K'um, uh, ma'to'ich'uk'ak'um'um'ib'at'ak, ma'pas'pas'ma'uch'ar'uh'nyit. Muu'iko muu'iko, uh, k'uh'uch'uch'um'ach d'et mu'nak'ak'ma ch'ma'mar'sh'ch'ama'uk'uch'uch'ch'um'ach d'et. Mo', mo'hyas'ma'ch mo'ot'otam, ba sh'uk'up'om'oi. Pi'ch'uk'm, pi'ch'uk'm'oidak'ek'ib'at'ak ho'uk'ach d'emo pi'ma'ch mo'hup'up' i'am d'et him. K'up'up' pi'ha'ak haich'uk, k'up'up' pi'ha'ak oh'hi. Ho'uk'ach d'emo pi'ma'ch mo', um, mu', pi'ami ch'utama hasmas'ma'totam'kas'uch'ot'otam'nyok'thim'udak. Oi p'eg'uch'mas'uh'g'awar'emas'ma has'ua'am d'um, um, uh, amich'um ma'tas'mas'mo'oi oi ho'uk'i w'ak. Uh, ch'up'mas'ma'nyit'ama'te'g'oto hum'uch'os'ma'ch'uk' t'ek'uh'nyok'tuch'him'udak. Uh, ta'ma'sha'is'ap', um, oi oi ho'uk'i w'ak mop' ird'ha'w'uch'uch. Ch'um, uh, pa, ma'ma'ch'ma'nyit'itam'aar. Mo'ma'tu'muu haichu hamam'ka'na't'up' i, uh, uh'mar'sh'ch'um ch'uh, um. Uh, sh'uk'ach haichu mai him. K'uh, w'us'uch'it haichu to'ijha'w'um ta'ma'te'g'oto'amar'sh'ch'um. K'um, uh, ma'ch'up' ird'uma'te'k'uh, uh, ma'tam'hu'us'oh'ak'uh. Ma'ho'uk'i ma'sha'ch'uh YouTube, ei. Hasmas'um bochi otam ka'ch'sh'ap'ix'ay'ma. Hasmas'ma bochi Youchoop, ei. Ach'up'iat'na ko'ak'ya'ak ma'ta'ma'to'ha'ijhan'ato ho'uk'm. Ma'tom'tash'uk'it hasmas'ma bochi haichu. Uh, p'ums'ek'oh'up'oi w'umt ta'mam'to'ho'uk'ach d'ek'otam'nyok. K'um, uh, pa, ach'up' ird'uh mop'up' p'ums'am haich'uch'uk'to. Mam'ta'k'um, haich'uch'ch'ch'um mam'te'g'oto ch'mas'oh'ha'sh'ak'um maar'sh'ch'ama. Pa haich'um ma'sha'after school programs. Mam ba'sha'ird'uma'ta'mhaich'um mo'y'sh'ono. K'otam'nyok'am d'et, uh, t'ek'otam'nyok'i, ash'sap'oh'ui w'umt. K'uh, nyok'am d'et haichu has'uch'has'uch'jamar'sh'ch'um oh, p'ums'oh'ui w'umt ma'ta'm. Uh, hum'ach'ya'ik'ak ma'ts'abo'uch'uch. K'um, uh, ma'ch'up' ird'uh mam'up'up' ird' aham itam, uh, mar'sh'ch'ama'ku't. Mam'mup' ird'um p'ums'up'ho'haich'uch'nyok'am d'et. P'egi nyat'ek'uh otam'nyok'i s'ap'oh'ui w'umt. Mam'ta'mbo'uch'ho'uk'm haichu. Uh, ta'mo'haich'uk'kat k'um p'ums'am haich'um'uch'uk'to ho'uk'um mam'up's'uch'um tar'sap'oh'ui w'umt t'ek'uh otam'nyok'i. Ch'uh, uh, p'ek'uh, ho'uk'i man'oh'anas'haichu. Um, p'ums'ap' ird'uh, p'ums'amerikan ka'ch'up'uch'uk building one. Et'ach'up' ird'uma'tpo'otam ka'ch'up'oi g'awar'ch. Uh, ta'po'ho'uk'ach'uk'ami ch'ud'et's'ami ch'ud'at'ek'ar. Um, p'ums', uh, och'uch'uch'uk'i, ki, um, ban'ki. Oh, och'uch'uch, hay'wan'ki, ei, ma'nyash'k'ay. Ash'na'ko has'ach'uch'uch. Pa ma'ta'sh'uk'ach'oh'nyit'at'ek'uh aar. Mo', mo'itam'm'uch'ik'itam, bi', bi', t'uh buildings pa'uch'ik. Uh, mam'et'ah', uh, uh'mar'sh'ch'um. Ach'ch'uk'mam'up' ird'uh mam'sap'oi w'umt p'ums'am haich'uch'uch'to. Um, ami mam'ma'm'uk'uk'os'et, uh, pa'apsap'oh'ui w'umt ma'ta'mo'haich'uk'oh'ah. Hasmas'ma bochi cafeteria otam ka'ch. K'um, w'us'uk'i haichu mop'om'oi'oida him aham mar'sh'ch'ama'ku't. Aham mam'mi'ni'ka'ham mam'ta'ak'uk'ek'ek'ma'ak'ar. Uh, ita'ach'up' ird'uma'mt otam ka'ch'up'ho'uk'ach ita'uh'ch'it a'uh. Ha ba k'uh otam'nyok'i ya'haich'uk'ma'ta'mo'moha'g'uk p'egi nyat'oh'm'um t'ach'ya. Kam'om'a'ak'ho'uk'i ma'pas'ch'up' ird'uma'mam'up's'uch'um. Oi, sh'ah'and'aid'am'ch'amerikan ka'ch. Kam d'et ch'uh, uh, ba'mam'sh'anyam'ach'et, how, yasha? Pe'ak.
Oi, um, so, really quick, um. So, I was expressing that I wanted to, uh, share. The presentation in Autumn in case we have people that are listening to Autumn. Um, uh, in case we're ha- we have listeners that maybe are listening live. Or, you know, catch the video later, which is what I do. Cause I forget about the meetings, then I catch it later. But, um, a lot of the, the reason behind that is a lot of my students will say and people around me will say. I don't know where to hear Autumn, I don't have a place to hear Autumn. So, um, I wanted to share in Autumn. You know, those, uh, for the individuals that do speak Autumn, understand Autumn, but also for the ones that are learners. Or curious of how our language sounds, you know, that they can go back and listen to the presentation in Autumn. And, um, so, one of the key goals for the, um. Language Center, ei, Autumn Y'ak'ki. Is to not only reclaim but normalize the use of the Autumn language. Normalize it and, you know, just to share a little bit. Um, uh, Ron was sharing when he noticed the shift. I noticed the shift when, um, I was at my grandmother's. My grandmother was my main, uh, my hood, but she was my main caregiver. And when my aunts and uncles came home from boarding school, they would only be speaking English. And me and my hood but we'll be like. You know, we just kind of look at each other like, okay, you know, then. But then as the break would go on, they start shifting back to Autumn. But then they would go back to their boarding school and then come back and then they'd be using English again. So, um, that shift was happening early on already. And, um, so, one of the key things that we wanted to highlight. And bring awareness is in normalizing the nyok. And I was sharing how it was, um, great to hear Ruben. Say, you know, introduce himself in Autumn, even though he's not Autumn, but he's taking the initiative. To introduce himself to Autumn. And, um, hearing Sylvia's response to the roll call, uh, to attendance, uh, yan'haich'uk, I'm here. It, it was great to hear that because, you know, it normalizes that situation. And, um, learner speakers can maybe use that like, oh, that's all it is? Okay, you know, I can start saying that too, I can start doing this too. So, the audience that are present are like, oh, what are they saying? And they'll come and come to you and ask you, what did you say? You know, what did you? And, but if it be, when it becomes normal, it's just gonna be a given. That this is how you do things. So, and we're not saying it's good or bad, we're just encouraging you. And, um, so, one of the things that, um, you know, with this slide. I just wanted to highlight, we wanted to highlight the things of, um. You know, those of you that are Autumn language speakers, to continue to use it at home. Even in your daily commands or whatever it is, continue to use it. And even if you just know a little bit, use those, uh, what you know. And it's gonna become normal for the children to, to use it, hear it and, um, use it. Um, the other thing that, um, I shared about was the radio station. They're already doing soundbites for Word of the Day. Or some of the interviews and the DJs, they broadcast in Autumn in English. You know, that's really awesome because then, again, it normalizes. And I would love to con, we would love to con, um, encourage them to continue to do that. Because again, it normalizes that our nyok is still out there. And, um, so for the parents, guardians, and, um, the community. Whatever it is you know, if you can, uh, use it in the community, the community events. Um, celebrations, all of those things, like, it was awesome to see. Um, in the preview, you guys were showing clips. And, um, I believe it was Tony Johnson that was doing the, the sh'uk'ud and he was singing and he say. Sh'ami mas'ma, and it was so awesome for the children to say. Ma'nyas'ap', I mean, it was just automatic and that's, that's awesome to see and hear. Um, that's what we mean by let's continue to use more Autumn to normalize it. And, um, so, we are acknowledging those things that are already happening. In the community and encouraging you to continue it and expand on it. And, um, so even at work and, uh, Mr. Pierce is gonna go more into. About the use of it, so I won't get into it. But, um, so what we also stress is that, um. I know that there are some family members, um, and community members that say. And this was an old myth that was, I don't know, I'm not gonna get into the history of how that came about. But their, um, community members were told it's gonna mess you up, it's gonna stunt your learning. If you don't learn English, all of that is false. All of that is false and there's research that, um, say. It only enhances your understanding of the world. And I was sharing how, when you only know English, you only see the world from one perspective. But when you know more than one language, like ours, you can see from this angle and this angle and this angle. Because when you start speaking our language, you'll see that we can say something this way. We can say something this way, we can say something this way, we can say something this way. There's multiple ways of saying the same sentence. And so how awesome that is. And research shows that, that only, um, expands a child's. Understanding and awareness of the, the world and academically, they can, um. It only en- enhances their learning. So I'll refer to the, the sign that's here, the growth mindset. So everything that you see on the growth mindset part, and I'm very familiar with the growth mindset. Um, everything that you see there, that's what it enhances. When you know another language and culture, because you can see the world and, um, in a different way. So we encourage you to continue to use it. Um, and if you're not, um, seek the help of the language center. Because we can help you enhance those things. And if it's already happening, if you already have resources at your school, awesome. Um, if you nee- need additional help, uh, the language center is there. To help you with, um, maybe the language or the content to, to bring more awareness to it. And I was also sharing how knowing, uh, the Autumn Nyak and him'udak, the language and culture. When a person or child especially is aware of your language and culture and in history. Their sense of identity is even stronger. And they have more confidence and self, um, empowerment and trust in themselves to move forward into the world. Um, when, and I was just sharing when I used to teach high school. I taught a lot of urban students where they only grew up with English. And, uh, most of them had, um, lost sense of identity. And were just hungry to learn like, who am I? Where do I come from? Um, I don't know where I'm going without this, you know, this foundation. And so, Autumn language, um, history and culture, when they know that, they have that foundation to fall on. So, it really is helpful. And I've seen students, i- in fact, one of my students, my former students. She's finished, uh, she graduated at U of A and she's doing a presentation. Of how coming into her own Autumn identity helped her. Um, to really solidify herself and she's graduating. She's doing, doing a presentation probably right now as we speak and I'm. But, um, I'm not gonna mention any names, I don't have her permission to use names. Um, so, um, so knowing, having this foundation, it would only strengthen. Um, and it also, um, sh'animas'ma bochi. It also minimizes the. Sh'animas'ma bochi, the, um, i. Ma'te'g'oto sh'han'ant'ko'ak, um, ma'tp'ha'bochi haichu. Um, it minimizes the. Uh, being ridiculed, uh, for a child. When, um, somebody is like, i, ash'rez, pe'ak, da'nyotam. You know, it's not rez, it's not village, it's your identity. And so when we min- minimize, when, when people have more knowledge of the language and, and the culture and. The history, they have more confidence and recognize it's not a negative thing. And so it minimizes the, the ridicule that can be affected by it. Um, so, um, and also understand, and I'm, I'm not gonna get into that. Um, so, um, when, so again, just encouraging you. To encourage people that are fluent speakers to use the language. Um, and also for those fluent speakers to, if they have learner speakers that wanna learn the language. Be available to them, but also know that the language center is available for them. And so then I was talking about, you know, if regarding the after school program, you guys. Um, have after school programs? But if you want to, if, when you want to start an immersion based. Uh, student centered, uh, after school program, the language center. Can help you with planning, cause I know as a teacher, it's kind of like, eh, another thing to do, like, uh. The principal, the superintendent is gonna make me do this and it's like, ah. Well, the, if you have an idea, you have a proposal of what you're thinking. Bring it to the language center and there, and, um, we're an awesome resource to help you. Uh, possibly with, uh, whatever language, Autumn Nyak, uh, challenges you have. But maybe the content and, uh, maybe even help you find, um, a community member that's certified. In the language to teach those, uh, after school programs. So, um, and then also just using the, the nyok at, um, community events with families. And then I was just sharing about, and I, I'm pretty sure you understood this part, like to, the optimize. Um, the school buildings. I know you have some buildings that are in Autumn, but, um. But also encouraging you, if you wanted to transition to Autumn signage. You can also reach out to the language center and can help you. Um, and I, the ge- the example I gave was like, because the classrooms are house, they're houses. They can be like band'ki, coyote house. They can be cow house and I was, that's a joke, but anyway. Um, yeah, kom'ch'uk'uk'i. Um, instead of like building one, which is so, you know, eh, bland. Give some life to those buildings and, and that's what I appreciate about the Thana Autumn Kuk'ar'amas'ch'ama'ku't. The, the community college is that we have our buildings named in Autumn. And even our non-Autumn faculty, they say, oh, we're meeting at Iw'um'ta'ki. You know, and it's like, cool, they're not saying building one or whatever. They're saying Iw'um'ta'ki or, uh, gu'ta'ch'uk'ut'aki, et cetera. So, anyways, I could go on and on, but I'm gonna stop right here. Sh'uk'up'om'od'ay'uk'i, um. Reach out to the Autumn Nyak Center and, um, continue to do what you are doing. And if you need to or want to expand, reach out to the Autumn Nyak'ki. Tay'uk'i.
Yeah. An'up'ch'uk'ik Dwayne Pierce, kom'kam'wak'tap'am'ajit. Uh, my name is Dwayne Pierce, I'm from way over there, cause I'm over here now. Uh, in the community of Wak. I always like to tease people over here, cause it's so far west. But, uh, I teach over at the college, I teach Thano Autumn History and Culture. And what I do there is kind of what I do when, all around. I live in Tucson, in the middle of all that. And, uh. What we do there is, um, just use Autumn whenever you can. You know, I grew up speaking Autumn and English at the same time. But then I went to boarding school, Saint John's. And, uh, graduated and all that and went to the workforce. So, my Autumn kinda went to the side, you know, and then. Barely after I decided to go back to school is when I realized that, like, uh, Ron was saying. You know, all of a sudden, when I grew up, everybody spoke Autumn. You know, unless you went into town, cause you didn't wanna get into trouble, so you spoke English. But, uh, we spoke Autumn and then it never dawned on me that I wouldn't be able to. Go back to my community and not hear it until recently. And it's like, wow, even the kids, you know, they don't know. So, what I do in my classes is I use Autumn as much as possible. Most of the students do not speak Autumn. And I'm myself am still relearning it spoken wise, I can understand well, but trying to get the words out. But I'm working on it. So I use Autumn as much as possible. A lot of the students. But I'm working on it. So I use Autumn as much as possible. A lot of the students appreciate it. The Autumn ones uh that live in the urban areas like Phoenix and Scottsdale. They appreciate it cuz they don't hear it at all up there. So what I do is just like when I'm teaching my classes. First off, I say, quit saying TO, you know, that's just rude. It's Thaunautum, use the language, don't hyphenate or abbreviate it. As I say that, to all my classes, don't say TO, that's just, that hurts. Say Thaunautum, so I kinda enforce that part and I use the emic. You know, when you em people, if there's, cuz I do have relatives that come to my classes and they expect better treatment, they say. Just because you're my nephew or whatever, you know, I em them in front of everybody and everybody just. Okay, and they might know what I, not know what I'm saying to them, but I explain it to them, you know, like uh. Her other half is my Hakit. So I will call him my Hakimut and he understands, you know, but. I use that in my classes and when I'm talking about the communities, I have a map that I got from the museum. That has them all in Autumn. I already know what their their Autumn names is, but I put it on my screen cuz I'm virtual. So it's that, don't say Sana Rosa, it's Gaichmuk. Don't say Santa Vera, Santa Vera is the church. But the community is Wauke. You know, and I do that throughout my classes and um. My cousin has a, a weird phone message thing. Where he'll go, you dial it and then he'll go, ha. Then you start talking like he's there and they're, sorry, I'm not. But can you leave a message? But you know, ha is like short for ha, hastu, you know, that's how we talk, ha, so I'm, I start talking, but. But that's one way you could do to use it all the time is change your answering machine to Autumn, you know, and. That way they have to ask you, what did you say, what did I say? And then you get to talk about it. Uh, share your stories and songs in Autumn. We learned a few songs. When I took the Autumn classes from Ms. Ramon and Ron over there. We learned songs, so I sing them, not to everybody, but in the morning when I. Get up in the morning, I try to get up by sunrise, just to talk with everybody that's around that you can't see, if you know what I mean. And I sing them songs, but uh. Also questions, you know, like a hasturita, you know, what is this, you know, and. People will look at you at first, but then if you use hand gestures. They kinda have a, like she was doing about the bananas. I had no idea we had a name for bananas. Until now, but uh, that's what I do and. Nicknames, you know, I use nicknames for people. I have my nickname that I had as a little kid. Uh. My Hoorbut called me uh Mo'akichut, which means, you know, like, she would tell me to do something and. It means like shaking your head in a negative way, so they still call me that and I'm approaching sixty-seven. That's supposed to be a little kid's name, but everybody in the community knows me that, so I, I in turn uh nickname. My students and people I know, based on how they act and what they do or some feature that's really prominent. So just those everyday things, you know, use what you know every day. Share, do not be afraid to make a mistake, cuz uh people. On the east side talk different from people over here, they talk real fast over here and it's just like. And as Ms. Ramon always tells me, you people at Wauke talk so slow. By the time you get, you know, it's okay, you know, just use it, use it. There's several dialects and they're going away. But uh, more in a, um, I don't know. Like a composite Autumn language of all the various dialects coming into one. That's okay, languages always change and uh, but just use what you know daily. With everyone around you. I wear T-shirts that have Autumn written on it when I go into town. And people say, that's so cool, what does it mean? And I explain, you know, word for word. And they're interested. And then you go out to my community and they say, where'd you get that shirt? And I said, those guys over there? I I don't know addresses, it's over there around that house. And uh, so there's little things you can do to use the language daily, whatever you know. And then, as they were saying, once you start that, it becomes more normal. Uh, I grew up speaking it, we got in trouble from the sisters from speaking Autumn in front of everybody, so we learned. In front of the Mirakon, don't speak Autumn. But around the community, you better speak Autumn, so they know that you belong there. And that's all I wanted to say, is just use what you know daily and then it'll become more normal for everyone.
So in conclusion, I just wanna say, um, thank you for. Having us, listening to us as we try to bring this language awareness to the community and um. And to, you know, the schools and everywhere else. Um, we did this with the Legislative Council and we. Had a symposium, language and language summit, which we titled. Which um kinda translates as bringing our minds together to save our language. And and so that's what we want to do, we want to gather, you know, our our thoughts and our ideas and everything together to work together. To try to uh stay away from this endangerment title. And so, and bring the language back uh to the children. Um, I I made it a point when when I started working in language. That I wanted to do a lot work with the children to be able to bring that language back because of what I saw in the. In the school district when I started working there. Um, and so, um. I I think that's the main thing that we're trying to do here is to bring everybody together. We know everybody, there's a lot of people out there working on language, doing things. And have that uh thought about doing something and. Uh, the Language Center is at Thaunautum Community College, but it's not. Uh, a center for the college, it's a center for the the whole nation. Um, and and so we wanted to say thank you again uh for having us.
Any comments from the board?
I I I have, I have one, go ahead, Mr. Diaz.
I have two. Number one, um, yes, we're hiring, um, and and we need three more Autumn Niyok teachers. So I I know they have a database, um, we're ready to hire them six months ago. So that's the first one. Uh, the second one, do you guys have an actual curriculum to share? Uh, with schools, with the community, uh, for after-school programs? Um, a five-year curriculum for teachers and students?
Uh, we tailor a lot of the curriculum that we offer based on what the need is. There's a different um. Needs across the communities that we work with, the schools we work with, but if you're looking for teacher training, we can offer teacher training to. Um, the teachers here, is that what you're asking for?
Um, what I'm referring to, are there any materials that we can tap into? Because we have some teachers. But they're developing the curriculum as they go. It will be very helpful if there's now a curriculum that then our teachers can tap into. Um, so that they can focus on teaching the language or the Niyok instead of developing it.
Exactly. We've collected resources over the years and I know when I worked at the Education Department, the Thought Automation Education Department. They had a Language Resource Center and so they had a lot of different materials for grade level um subjects. Common topics that are taught across all schools related to the language, but there isn't a specific developed curriculum. I know when Dr. Morris was here, she was working with the um teachers and developing. A curriculum centered around the seasons and the Autumn calendar. But that was something, I think that was the most comprehensive um that was developed.
Are there any plans in developing a curriculum that then our schools or let me use that much Kama Kud can use?
Yeah, we can work with the teachers because we have a database of tenured. Language and culture teachers who have more than fifteen years of experience teaching language and culture in a classroom setting that could work. Alongside the teachers that are within the schools now to develop something like that. That's something that we could help support through the Language Center.
Think, uh, is that it, Mr. Diaz?
Yes, that's it. I said two, but there was five, sorry.
I was just gonna say, I know that, and and thank you for pointing out, um, I know that the efforts have been pretty, pretty extensive on on the end of the school. Uh, particularly because, um, even for myself, being a student. It was was the only place that I heard any Autumn. And now. The point being made about being ridiculed or having, making, making, make individuals, making others feel uncomfortable about even. Trying to express themselves in that way. Um, I'm glad that you had a conversation with Legislative Council, but what, but what I. Know has been also detrimental to that is while they're, while they're voicing their support. Um, legislative representatives are also saying, bring a translator because we're not going to tell you what we're saying. Which is, which is, you know, if that's how you wanna cheat somebody, I think that's fine, but the way that you all approached and and how I feel. As an individual who desperately wants to be able to help and be, um, at least. Find a solution for what what I know we all want in the long run, um, that genuinely came and and feels like how many. Uh, individuals who still are seeking something in themselves, especially because we know we're Autumn and we know what we, who we belong to. That language component, um, while it isn't difficult, I know just seems to be. Far away from 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 many of us, but we do, I think, here even as a board, try to ingrain as much as we can. Into the, I mean, into the, what we're doing, for the sake of what you just said. The more that it's visible or. The more that it's used, uh, sparks the question in the mind of all those that are watching, all those that are, that are at least um, listening. So, thank you so much for the presentation. Um, I I'm I'm very, very eager to see what we can actually do to work together, especially with our. Our amazing uh culture teachers and our Director for Culture and Language. Um, we put a lot of trust and heart behind them and. If you hang out for a little bit, I'm sure that there are videos of the children doing even much more, um. That has just been very organic, you know, not nothing that we're forcing and nothing that we're ridiculing anybody about, but just being present. And continuously doing it every single day, um, that it makes them feel comfortable with. Understanding and and speaking, so I'm grateful that there, that there are. Welcoming and very genuine individuals that are behind this project and and I can't wait to see what will come of it. And I hope for, look forward to being a partner and how we're doing it. Ms. Vets?
Um, Teresa, are you saying anything? Not to hate you? Okay. Teresa, what do you know? So, I'm a tiyo yuetta, uh, sisapa Autamnyak, I'm a, so. I'm very nervous, so. Oh, yeah, either Autamnyak or Sihasaitu. See, big, early, um, ah, pi mat, 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 uh, sapamah. Hookach, oh, yeah, ah, jim, pi hookach. Or pi ma chma, hatsma sma, mo, sapo mo, hookach. Hookat, uh, ha, has. Hookat, uh, um, uh, shit, no, that. Um, huh, ki, runo, mat, uh, sa, um. Uh, ma, uh, runo, mat, uh, nywumt, mat, uh. Smatch, mo, hatsma, sma, bo, Autamnyak, oh, yeah, pi, I didn't pick it up. Um. Chemo, Danny, but, hookat, uh, uh, nyamashcham, dan, uh. Oh, yeah, pi, or hook, hookil, he, oh. So, ah, pi mat, ah, pi mat, uh, ah, pi. Mat si smatch, hookach, hookachin. Because us, for us who don't, it's just a dream. Oh, yeah. Maske awis, maske awis, but just wanna say thank you to, especially. My supervisor, Teresa, for taking the initiative to. To use the language at the office, you know, just here and there, it helps, um. And wanna thank the Center for everything, all the efforts that you're doing to. I didn't realize until I really saw, I mean, I've heard. About the statistics, but to really see it and know that, it's leaving. And I remember at one time, Danny, I was talking with Danny and. I know I had to do a speech in Autumn and, um. I I don't, I just remember saying that we are, we are the own, we are the enemy of our own language. But it's true how. Um, hooka mat bi, bi Autam, um. Have that mindset of, you're gonna confuse the child because that's what was told to me. When I was trying to, I was really trying to learn and I was talking, teaching my son. And he could name all the animals, he could name the colors, he could, he could, he was learning, but. The people, the, the language or the speech from. Not here on the nation, said, why are you trying to, trying to teach him? You're confusing him. And he's not, his, the sounds, and I told him because he's Autam. And that's his language. And you won't understand that because you're not Autam. So, that's how important it is. I remember one time I was sitting, I was going through stuff and I was sitting there crying outside and. And I was watering the trees and my son was sitting next to me and he just sat there and he. And then I, I, I told him, you don't have to learn Autam. It's not important because that's what, I was trying to get someone to understand. You don't teach Autam, you just speak it. You just speak it, we'll pick it up. And I remember telling him, you don't have to speak Autam. And he looked at me and he was looking at the stuff floating around in the water and he said. And I, I looked at him, he goes, yeah, what the? And then that changed everything. That's how important it is. You know, he said to me, look, there's a fish. And it. I just, I just finished telling him it wasn't important and yet I knew that was wrong. So. I'm really glad that you're here today because our teachers. Here, our language teachers, they know it's important, but us as a board. We have to still make those changes about the buildings, that's a great idea. About knowing the di- directions, that it's posted somewhere so that the kids will pick it up. But my hardest thing was trying to do the verbs, the connections to the nouns. That's the hardest for, was for me and I still can't do that. I can hear, I can listen, I can understand. But for me to say something, that connection is not there yet. And yet is a powerful word. Uh, thank you.
Ms. Sylvia.
Thank you for your presentation, um, I, I, I've witnessed, um, you and at, as. Part of the Language Center and what you're doing and all the work that you're putting into it and I really hope that we, um. We, we become part of this, uh, this project and that we, we, uh, get our. We get our staff, our teachers and everybody, um, I think that this is something that maybe. Could we present it at the, um, at the beginning of the school year? I think that, that way they would have a better understanding of what direction we're looking at and what we're looking at. It to increase our language and I too am, I only understand it quite, uh, some and I do speak. A little bit, the only person I will converse with is Andrea. Cause that's all she'll speak to me and so I have to answer her in, you know, in what I know, you know, what I know how to speak. Uh, but again, um, and Teresa, I know that I'm very proud that you are our first. Uh, earned your, your, your degree in au- uh, done autumn from TOCC. I'm very proud of that and I know that there are others behind you that are, that are looking to do the same. So again, thank you for your presentation and I really would encourage. Um, us as the school district, Mr. Diaz, to maybe have this presentation done in front of all the, the district.
Ms. Andrea.
I just wanted to add that we're also currently working with the three tech startups owners. In transition to inversion, so they're preschoolers. And right now, we, we, um, have a checkup, check-in for the school sites, partners and teachers. And they're ready to use, um, and responding to them. And there's still a long way to go, but, um, we're actively working with them. Coaching them into using all the autumn, cause using autumn is a habit. So, just know that in a couple of years. These preschoolers who are moving towards growing speed in the young, they're gonna be in, in their schools. And one of the things that I'm glad, um, Patrick brought this up. Is that, um, and this is something I used to challenge the students about this year. Cause right away they would get targeted, a lot of those fluent speaker, oh, they're, they're bringing them all, they're saying, and I'm like, no. They're thinking autumn, they're using autumn grammar, this is why they're saying it this way. And, but right away, they were so quick to, um, label them. And so that's another hard reason awareness of like what a fluent speaker looks like and miss their confidence. And it's just that this other side needs to understand the confidence level of that child. Instead of labeling them right away, um, because that label is perpetuum in the long run. So this, awareness, things like that, but, um, um, so yeah, be ready for those preschoolers. They're already showing signs of using and understanding the young, cause there's different stages of learning the language. And they're understanding more and they're starting to use more and families are asking, what does my parent say? So we have another person, I'm not doing the school, the centers directly. And we have another person that's working with the family, uh, foundation, uh, piece.
I have some members of the community that they're texting that they can't hear you, that if you don't mind. Come into the microphone whenever you're ready to share something else.
Okay, if there's nothing else, thank you so much again for your presentation.
Thank you, Dwayne, yeah.
I'm gonna join you for lunch and immersion. Where's my invite? It's not in my calendar.
Number five this evening is the Barbecue Unified School District Governing Board Financial Report, Ms. Ravical.
Tough follow. The top one, please. Thank you. Okay. So attached here, we have the fiscal year twenty-four student, I'm sorry. I was in the, in the mode, good evening, Board President Buendia. Ms. Vance, Ms. Sylvia Hendricks and, um, Superintendent Diaz. I'm going to be presenting the student activities and auxiliary numbers for November. So attached, I have the, um, fiscal year twenty-four student activities auxiliary balances through November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. The student activities account received deposits totaling three thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, the high school student council, I tried to go in order so it can follow. Um, the high school student council had receipts totaling one thousand one hundred eighty-four, um, dollars. The class of twenty-four had receipts totaling eight hundred ninety-two dollars. Class of twenty-five had receipts totaling three hundred forty-two dollars. Class of twenty-six had receipts totaling three hundred fifty-four dollars. Class of twenty-seven had receipts totaling three thou- three hundred twenty dollars. And the eighth grade promotion account had receipts totaling two hundred and fifty dollars. All from the food sales at the high school Babo Day on, um, November fifteenth. The high schools, high school boys' basketball received a deposit of a hundred and seventy dollars. For concession sta- sales at the girls' basketball game on November eighteenth. The high school girls' basketball, um, team received a deposit of two hundred and sixty-three dollars. For concession sales at the girls' basketball game on November twentieth. The ending balance for student activity account on November thirtieth was a hundred and five thousand fifty-seven dollars and nineteen cents. A little bit lower, Aaron, please, thank you. The student auxiliary re- um, fund received revenues totaling four thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirteen cents in November. The high school auxiliary received deposits of four hundred and twelve dollars for the high school girls' basketball gate fees. And a rebate check of eight hundred and fifty dollars from the All-American publisher, publishing for two, two, um, two thousand twenty-three posters. The high school also had a disbursement of two hundred and ten dollars and sixty-one cents for an Amazon order. Eight hundred dollars to Benson Union High for the Boys and Girls Basketball Tournament entry fees. And four hundred dollars to Valley Christian High for Boys Basketball Tournament entry fees. The, um, intermediate had receipts totaling three thousand and three dollars and thirteen cents. From Scholastic Book Fair Sales, the ending balance for auxiliary on November thirtieth was seventeen thousand thirty dollars and fifty-one cents. Do I have any questions on student activity and auxiliary?
Questions from the board?
Okay, I'll move on to our, um, expenditures balances if you wanna open up the department budgets. And the first one should be the district office, or, sorry, district office, district as a whole. So, um, number one, thank you. Attached here, you'll find the, um, fiscal year twenty-four expenditures through November thirtieth, um, two thousand twenty-three. Um, the M and O budget balance re- um, reflects. Four million eight hundred fifty-two thousand seven hundred twenty-seven and thirty-one cents. We are five months into the fiscal year and everything is looking good. We have submitted a December budget revision, um, due to the loss of average daily membership or ADM for approval, which was. Uh, the hearing that we had earlier today. Overall, we currently have an eighty-three point seventy-two percent or eighteen million six hundred seventy-eight thousand. Eight hundred and sixty-four and forty, I'm sorry, and seventy-six cent budget balance excluding encumbrances. We received five million two hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred sixty-eight and forty cents. So far in fiscal year twenty-four in revenues from all funds excluding fund. Um, for student activities and insurance fund. And as a, just an extra side note, the business office continues to submit documents for the performance and single audit requests daily. Do I have any questions on the, um, expenditure budget?
No questions? Thank you, thank you, Ms. Ravical.
You had mentioned the audit and that's occurring now, right?
Yes, we're still currently in our audit, two, two separate audits.
Okay, two separate, huh?
Mm-hmm, one for the AG's office and then our, um, single audit with our, our annual audit with our.
And, and when is that, uh, proposed to be completed?
We're pending right now, we had, um, communication from the, um, Pima County Office. They are, um, there's a lag time and they have not completed, um, reconciliations. So, anything that has to do with our cash is on hold and cannot be completed until we get notification from the county. Um, so that part is waiting, but, um, we just have a few more items to wrap up, but when. We have a few more items and we submit, we get, um, back from the auditors and they have more stuff for us to pull. So it's a daily thing, um, when I do present at the, um, board retreat next month. I'll be going over more in depth of the audit process and types of things that they ask for. The number of requests that we get from them so that the board can have a better understanding of the audit process.
Did you, did you send us an engagement or was there an engagement letter or something to do? And over there was like several and we've been just hearing that they're still in process, still in process, still in process. But what then are we, how are we or what do we? Makes me feel. So I, I think we need to know, what are we doing, what are we sending, are we waiting for something, are they waiting for something, um?
It's an ongoing process, yeah, we get multiple requests and then they will add on depending on spending. Um, so we have two additional, um. Grants that they're going to be auditing also, so Impact Aid will be audited, we did get, that was part of the letter, Impact Aid and ESER. And so it's, in essence, it's a whole separate audit just on that funding. So it's more items for our department to pull, um, and communicate back and forth with the auditors on. But that part has not even started yet, so, but that isn't part of the single audit, it's part of the, um, grant. Federal grant audits.
I guess, I guess why I'm asking is that when are we going to see results of the audit and findings, if any?
So, that, yeah, that usually, they, they wrap up in March, um, yeah, the deadline is the, the last day in March. And so we typically hear around that, if they can finish before then, we do.
They usually have set, um, deadlines when it should be completed.
I think part of what has extended it to is all the ESER money that we get, that they have to audit. So that is, is very intensive to pull all of that information also, it's been added on top, so. I, once the ESER money is done and spent, the year that that gets audited, it should. Fill back to normal, I'm hoping.
I think I'd like, uh, maybe at least an initial summary from the beginning. Uh, when they were initiated, if there is an engagement letter or something to kind of lay out for us to that degree.
Sure.
Absolutely, then you can give us more detail at the retreat.
Sure.
That'd be great. Is that okay? Okay, thank you, Ms. Ravical.
You're welcome.
Like the claps, let's all, let's keep that energy. Number six, Barbecue Unified School District, um, principal reports. Ms. Enriquez.
Good evening, President Buendia, board members, Mr. Diaz, I have submitted my board report in writing, I hope you had the opportunity to read it. Um, and Mr. Bates, if you could play our video, sorry, caught you mid-drink.
And I need you to repeat after me, okay? Pro by my smile. Pro by my smile. I can't hear you. A little bit louder. Pro by my smile. Pro by my smile. Mine is a. Mine is a. Pro by my smile.
My AP works hard on this video.
And I need you to repeat after me, okay? Prop by Masma. Prop by Masma. I can't hear you. A little bit louder. Prop by Masma. Prop by Masma. Mine is afa. Mine is afa. Prop by Masma.
Oh, try that again.
Too close, too close.
We'll fix it later. What's the last sound?
K.
K.
Remember the A and T. Care, very good.
Yelling.
Okay, very good. Very good, next.
Any questions from the board for primary report? I don't have any questions.
Let's put our hands together for Ms. Jolimbe Gay, please.
Good evening, Board President Buendia, board members and Superintendent Ruben Diaz. I hope you had a chance to read my board report. And Erin, you can go ahead and play it.
Okay, and on Friday, today's Friday, we have our three star students that are going to be selected. No, thank you for everyone that's for the star student. That means you are, you know, an amazing example of what a student that's learning in this classroom environment is, thank you. Special point is the access to, access and amazing book of your choice. So here we go, who's gonna start? The numbers? Not the thirteen?
Going green, no.
They did alright, yeah.
Oh yeah, the negative coordination.
Oh, okay, so you guys have to write a course, right? Okay, tell us, the, the two main ones from our story, who were the, um, Jerks?
These are spurs. To like, kind of spur the cow to go. Sometimes cows in the chute, they don't want to go. But then the guys who open the gate, they close it again. And then they open it again, then they'll go out. We just have to spur them real hard, and then this is what makes, this is what makes them go.
So, um, I'll show you just a few of them. Um, the first one I showed them was the diamonds. First one is, oh, there's two. If you know the string games, um, come let me know. But my people, because there's snow now and the bugs are not here, um, we can play the string, especially the spiders. The one that I can do, and I'm pretty sure Ms. Begay knows this one, this one, we call this one the coyote. So this one, they're moving. And then the last one that I know that I'm gonna try to teach my class, I'm trying, forgetting, it takes me a while to remember, is the person flipping over the, over the fence. So, I don't know if you guys can see it, there. This is just a game my people plays because the, the, the days are shorter and the nights are longer, so, um, back home, a lot of the students are playing this now, so, if you guys know how to play the string games, or if you want to learn, come ask some of my students, so they can come in, um, teach you guys how to play. So, thank you.
Thank you. I guess I should ask if there's anything you feel like you want to highlight in your report, or something we shouldn't miss. Unless you have questions, no?
The only thing I want to highlight is, um, um, I want to make sure that I acknowledge, uh, Alan Leonard and Chris Marietta for their courageous efforts to make sure that our students were safe, um, when the accident happened on the intermediate campus. Um, Alan, he, uh, Alan Leonard made sure that all the students were out of the bathroom. And because of, uh, Chris Marietta's fast actions, the fire was not able to spread. And so, I'm very thankful to both of them and to our student of the month, Keenum, for speaking up right away, so we knew where it was as, as fast as we could get to it. And so it was able to be taken care of right away. And the fire department also made sure that, um, they acknowledged them and told them that they did a good job. And so we're hoping for, um, them to know and hopefully they're listening, that we do appreciate what they did.
Thank you. I think that's it.
Ms. Edna Leva.
Ms. Leva.
Let's give her some love, come on, you're next.
Good evening, President Buendia, Ms. Vance, Ms. Hendricks and Superintendent Diaz. I have submitted my report. And if we could play the video?
We need full moon quarters.
Yeah. You know, it's next. Same question, Ms. Leva, anything you feel like you want to highlight or anything we shouldn't miss?
Yes, so if you go to priority three, uh, I don't know what page it is, two, three? One more, go up a little bit higher. Oh, right there at the bottom, sorry, the top of the, that page. So I highlighted, um, some of the changes. As we're going through the year, you will see that I, I changed the color of anything that's new to that month. And we've been working on fun and engaging lessons. And the most recent update is that we are collaborating with Ms. Cornell here from the district to help our teachers, um, gain more information and learn more strategies from Avid. So although some of our teachers have gone to Avid training, it's kind of like anything, if you don't continue to use it. Um, so we have some of our new teachers and our leadership team that is gonna be working with Ms. Cornell to hone in on those strategies so that they can then go and work with their departments.
Awesome, great use of resources. Thank you so much. Any, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fox, you're up.
Let's get up for Fox. Good evening, President Buendia, board members, Superintendent Diaz. You've received my report and I hope you had the time to look it over and play that video, Erin, please. So I had a lot of trouble hi- uh, getting one of my slides into perspective where you could actually see it. It wasn't two hundred dollars, it was four thousand two hundred dollars that Yodo over the month gave, uh, dis- uh, dispersed to twenty-eight of our students based on attendance. That's what, that's the green one right there.
Questions? If not, always appreciate it, thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
And Youth on Their Own is a great, um, organization, so.
Yeah, they've been very generous.
Number seven, this evening, it's our barbecue unified school district governing board member reports. Who's going first? No reports? Okay, no problem. Number eight, this evening, um, barbecue unified school district superintendent's report. No report, we'll move on, I'm just kidding.
I missed it. Rewind. Um, President Buendia, members of the board, members of the community and fellow colleagues, uh, thank you for being here. As part of the report, I want to make a, a few highlights, um, um, I want to... I want to thank the team and the cabinet that participated in the cognitive coaching sessions. And even Ms. Stevens, she participated in some of them. This is one of our goals that we have, which is number 10 that we're going to be coaching throughout. So there will be some makeup sessions for some of the sessions that were missed for some of our staff members. But nevertheless, I'm very proud and I'm very grateful that everyone was able to participate and see the change. Also, I want to take advantage of this moment to highlight some of my team members' report. Starting with operations. Thank you for the trainings that you're setting up with WAXI to continue to commit to providing support to your team. And it's exciting to see that weatherization project is coming up. And also age back in the roof projects and the progress that you have made. And to oversee that for the intermediate, the roof is 57% completed. And for the high school is 30 something, 36% completed. So we're excited that our schools will have new roofs. I also want to thank Ms. Aggie Hart for the work well done during Miracle on Main. And also for the month of November, serving 184 families and serving over 7,000 pounds of food for the community. Let's give her a big hand for that. And thank you to the curriculum instruction department, Ms. Kinsey and Ms. Medina, for coordinating the classroom visits, having the governing board members as well as the I L T from the district for the month of, I mean, for the spring. And we send the, I mean, for the fall, we also send a sign up sheet to our governing board members for the spring. So looking forward to see you join us. We highlighting as part of getting to know our staff members, that's one of the requests from our governing board members. If you don't mind, Erin, looking, pulling out the one for the speech program. That one, the speech program. I would like to introduce and the governing board members to meet our Catholic crane, which is a speech program. All of our contributions to our district, including modeling communication, providing speech language interventions, and providing informal assessments of a risk students, and also provide informational developmental milestones and expectations and at-home interventions for the community. So let's give a hand to our speech pathologists for joining us. For being part of our teaching community. The department that I want to highlight is our counseling department. For the counseling department, I want to encourage our staff and our community members. As part of their newsletter for November, they have included the top 10 coping skills. Holidays can be blooming for some of our brothers and sisters or members of the community. I encourage you to please take the time to see some easy ways in how to promote wellness to our community. A big hand to our counseling department, and job well done. Having said that, I also want to thank our district affairs manager for supporting and capturing all of the highlights for the month of November and putting this video together. So if you don't mind, Erin. Thank you, Ms. Tanya Sudan. Questions?
Was there, was there an update on the gym at Ice?
We do have an update on the gym. We have completed the requisition process. We're waiting out for Tero, and we're hoping as soon as Tero completes their process to begin the work at the gym. Once Tero approves it, it will take two weeks for the gym floor to be completed. Four weeks. Four weeks.
Two weeks. I'm just kidding.
I want it done in two weeks. I want it done in two weeks.
You made him nervous. Okay, thank you. Perfect. Appreciate it. Anything else?
I guess just with the basketball season going on now, I noticed there is kind of adequate seating, but I just think that like tonight, I don't know about the varsity game, if it got really filled up because it was already filling up for the JV game and people were still coming. Just a little bit, you know, just making sure that, you know, we don't have any kind of accidents, I guess, in regards to them with the seating for the basketball games or season that's going on now.
We're just real cozy when you're at the game.
We're getting close. That's a good thing. So if you have any connections in terror, we welcome any support.
Is that it? Yeah. Okay, we'll move on. Number nine, no information for coaches and club sponsors. Letter F, this evening is a discussion and possible approval of the barbecue unified school to check 24, 25, 25, 26 calendars. Mr. Diaz.
President Buendia, members of the governing board, members of the community, we are excited in presenting the governing board, not one but two years, two academic years of calendars to be able to get it approved. And if we can get that 2024, 25 school year, Erin, on the screen. In the process that took place, there was a committee that was put together to be able to look at what are the needs as a district, what are the needs of our community? And also what are the academic needs and requirements for the state? And under those circumstances, the committee brought together this proposal that includes the four community days. If you notice in yellow, those are the community days. We have converted the, we're proposing to convert the Miracle on Main a community day. So we can prevent some confusion in the community, given that when we have late events, we usually have no schools for that day. Another major change that you're going to see in this calendar, it's also day, it's also included as part of the calendar that will be culturally sensitive, based on our attendance data. That's one of the days that are impacted. By making it one of the holidays, it will allow us to have control over the other days on the attendance. We still have the 180 days required by the state, and we also continue to have the three days for new teachers, five days for returning teachers. You're going to see that the starting of the year on the 25th and on the 26th of July, they're half days. Well, it will allow not only for the students to start, but also to be able to have come to meet your teacher day on both days. That way the families have multiple children, they have the opportunity to come and meet their teachers on the 25th or the 26th, depending on their schedules. Comments, questions, concerns, and any members of the committee, you're welcome to also share any points that I might have missed. Ms. Enriquez.
Did you have any parents on your committee? A parent?
We don't, we did not have parents as part of the committee, President Buendia.
How come? Would it be biased maybe to just include a parent? I say that because I know much of the, much of the discussion that we get or the comments come from parents, or at least. And at least including a community member might feel a little bit more.
No, we didn't, President Buendia. What we did, we had the committee and then the calendars were shared with all of the schools and the staff to give us additional feedback. But no, no parents were, to my knowledge. Ms. Enriquez? Can you confirm? My understanding is that no, no parents were included as part of the committee.
Okay.
We did try and consider the holidays that the nation has.
Okay.
And so we tried.
Well, can you speak on the microphone? Given that the members of the community, they can hear us when we don't speak on the microphone.
We did try and consider the nation's holidays and when the nation employees got or were able to leave home early, then we tried to accommodate our schedule as well. Because then when the nation gets off early, then they come and take our students out early. So we tried to accommodate their schedule as well.
I think one of the.
Wait, Ms. Sylvia. Thank you, Ms. Bagheel Lewis.
I think one of the things that I had thought about after meeting with you was that, I know that, I don't know, I guess maybe as a question and a comment in regards to this, the month of February, where the rodeo fair is slowly coming back, I guess. I think it came back last year after the pandemic, you know, where, you know, but, but it's not a full, it wasn't a full rodeo fair, and I'm not sure what the, what it is going to be this year. Which means, you know, the carnival, you know, things like that. But just, just curious to see if that affected for last year when it came back, the attendance. And then also if we considered that for this year, this coming year's calendar and the following year.
My understanding is that that committee took a look at all of the attendance patterns. And the changes that they made on the schedule were to prevent any additional absences. And they accommodated the calendar to prevent absentism.
Ms. Enriquez, header.
Ms. Enriquez. Thank you.
We're going to use the microphone.
As Ms. Bagheel mentioned, we tried to ensure that all the days off, all the PD days surrounded the community needs. So for example, if you look at what you were talking about, Ms. Hendricks, the 31st of January, since the first weekend of February is usually the rodeo, we made the 31st a PD day so that students aren't here because we did look at attendance from previous years. And those were days that students missed a lot of school. So rather than making it a half day, we made a no school day. And typically what we do as a staff is we go and support our students that are participating in the rodeo. So that's part of our professional development. So we did take those things into. Sorry, I lost my train of thought.
Consideration.
Thank you. Consideration. And then if you notice, we did three half days in September, the 25th, 26th, and 27th to accommodate parent-teacher conferences. Because we also noticed if we do it in one night, you're really pushing the conferences to only be 10 minutes. And that's not fair to the parent, that's not fair to the child, and that's not fair to the teacher. So teachers are required four nights on their contract. So rather than having conferences in the spring and the fall, be considered two of those nights. We want to utilize those nights to have more parent-teacher nights and students so that we can teach certain strategies to parents, but not only that, but have like make it take at nights, whatever the school does plans for it, so that we can start bringing community back into our schools as well. That focuses around those academics.
Awesome.
Thank you. I think that answers my question.
Anything else? Go ahead, Ms. Hendricks.
I think that it's a good idea to have the two-year schedules because you're really looking at, I mean, it, it, just all the colorful and stuff, but it was a lot of work that went into this, I could just tell. So thank you for the team for doing that. And then, so now the community will know not only next year, but the following year, so that they will be prepared. And it's out there. So thank you.
Yeah, I think just to add to that, and it helps them plan, you know, plan their, you know, vacations or whatever it is that, you know, and different types of events that they want to do, you know, as a family.
Ditto. All right, without any objection, I'll motion to approve the item as presented.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sylvia Hendricks. All those voting for.
Mostapa.
Against. Motion passes. Number two, discussion and possible approval of the barbecue unified school to check expenditure report, sorry, expenditure budget revision number one. Any questions? If not, I'll move to approve. Is there a second?
I just had a question.
Go ahead.
I guess I was a little bit kind of confused with that. The enrollment went down, but the budget increased.
No.
No, it decreased. On the memo, you can see it.
And sorry for note purposes, I missed who made the motion on the previous one and who seconded it.
I motioned.
I seconded.
Well, voted for.
Thank you.
Okay, maybe I heard that wrong, but okay. I think that was a, yeah, and with that, I'll second it.
Did you see?
You want to make the motion?
Yeah. Are you sure you want to see? No? Okay.
So Buendia made the motion.
Second by Ms. Sylvia Hendricks. All those in favor?
Mostapa.
Against. Motion passes. Letter G, second sit agenda this evening.
Mostapa, I mean, motion.
No, wait, you don't. I'll second the motion. Motion by Sylvia Hendricks, second by Juan Buendia. All those. No, I don't. I'll second the motion. Motion by Sylvia Hendricks, second by Juan Mundiya. All those in favor?
Most of them.
Against? Motion passes. No, letter H, no, uh, I, uh, any requests for future agenda items? Policy review. Future meeting.
It's part of the retreat.
I don't want to.
There will be a section as part of that retreat of policy review.
I think it needs to be.
It will help if you let me know any specific policies.
Well, I would like is for you to go through and look at any policies that you're having any questions on, difficulties that are need updated because I think we know that there are things that come up and maybe there's a way and a means that the board can help support you carry out those policies in a better way or, or in a way that helps to support you and the staff.
Chronic absentism or pro- anything?
I think that as a team, I think that's something that you could work with your team on.
If you want, I would set up a committee of your administrators or whomever just to take a look and propose and then we can review. I, I know I've been asking for it for a while, but because I know that the, in the previous years, there were even instances where, you know, policies can be updated and there are stuff that we actually need to make sure are updated to help support our communities, the district. But.
We'll look into some. That will be part of my one-year anniversary policy gift for you guys.
Um, Ms. Metz.
I don't know if it will be an agenda item, um, but just thoughts on, I know that the three-year goals is coming to an end. The stretch goals, it seems like, so if, if your team will start looking or you and your team start looking at the addition, the, because we want, I, I love the fact that there's the three-year stretch goals and then after that, keep us going.
Once more than three years.
Um, during the retreat, you'll be able to see the mid-year benchmark and, or during the fall, and then for during the spring last quarter, we're going to be planning for the next school year and revisiting then the three-year goals as well to determine what modifications we need to change based on our growth.
Okay. That was just, I want to just keep going and keep doing what we're doing as far as making sure that everybody's on the same page and everybody knows that, that we're moving forward after the first three years to an additional, whatever you're going to do, whatever, wherever we're headed, that we just continue rolling, just that don't stop. Yeah.
We don't have a choice.
Yeah.
That's what you're going to, uh, give us a, a glance at?
We're going to give you a glance at where we are on the fall data and then, uh, with, based on that data, you're going to take a glance of what are our next steps for the spring that we're going to work with the students and our teachers.
Okay.
And it's not until the summer retreat that you're going to see any changes on the three-year plan.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, everybody got the dates, right? Okay.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
All right. Anything else for future meeting agendas?
I, what, a couple of things. Um, there's a few items, uh, on your hires that I may be asking to see when are you available for special board meeting? Um, and, um, I need to meet with my team regarding the January meeting. Many of my team members will be on a two-week fall break, um, a winter break. Um, and the documents are due when they're on vacation and that creates some changes, uh, or some conflicts. But let me survey my team members because some of them, they want to keep that, uh, board meeting as it is in January. Uh, some of them, they would like to postpone it a week, um, uh, or not on the second week, but a third week in January so they have time to complete the, uh, the, the reports when they come back. But I'll be coming to you with more information and, and, and asking for guidance if you're available for that.
I want to say there's a statute that we have to have our organizational meeting before a certain date in January too. So just keep that in mind and check the Arizona statutes. And the date that we had to do our organizational meeting before.
I'll check on that.
But double check. Ms. Metz?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think we have to have it by the 15th or something. Go ahead.
Organization meeting. Uh, this is by Ben, about, um, statue.
No, I just, I just wait for him to let us know about that.
That's true. Special meeting?
About the special meeting, I mean, the special.
Is there any dates that are not good for you right now you want to announce? For me, I can't do the 10th, 11th or 12th in that week. And if we do, I mean, the ninth works, it's perfect because I already plan everything around it, but either way. But I think there is a statute that we had to do something before.
Before the 15th? Okay, let me check on that. Um, didn't you say that you cannot do it the 10th, 11th and 12th?
Oh, I'm at a NAF board retreat, NAF office retreat.
Okay, so I'll be coming to you. Um, I'll send, uh, zone communication, uh, do not reply all, um, regarding the January meeting. Okay?
And then you were going to work with us on a special meeting?
On a special board meeting, um, I know today is the 12th. Um, would you be, or in, any of you be available on the 19th?
Like the midday?
Afternoon meeting?
It's a, it's a lunch.
Okay, that's fine. I could do noon, I can't do evening.
And virtual?
Um, yes, we could do virtual.
Virtual? How?
Uh-huh, at 12 o'clock.
Yeah, that's all. Um, because I'll, I'll just be saying, I'll just be calling in.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Um, once I pose the agenda, I'll be available to answer any questions that we, we can expedite the meeting as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any movement to adjourn?
Some move.
Movement by Ms. Sylvia Hendricks. Second, I'll second the motion. All those in favor to adjourn December 12th meeting?
Most of them.
Motion without any objection, motion passes to the time is 8:50 PM. We are adjourned. Thank y'all.